Alright, we're gonna call the meeting of ISD 361 to order. Roll call, Mike Holden?
Here.
Michelle Hebner?
Here.
Tony Corpey?
Here.
Jennifer Windows?
Here.
Ted Saxon here, Terry Murray?
Here.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietz?
Here.
Kevin Grover?
Here.
Ella Bar-Jeffries?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was one of the better ones I've been involved with.
Everybody was speaking a little quieter.
Do we have anybody that would like to talk for public open forum? I wouldn't have any, give the opportunity to sign up, but if you'd like to now, now would be the time. Go once, twice, gone. Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Hold on one sec.
Do we have to just approve the regular?
Yeah. Yeah. Right? Okay, so something's just a little off here. Okay, we're gonna approve the agenda as presented, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by Terry, any further discussion?
Hang on, I have one addition. I would like under the consent agenda to add a number fifteen, and it isn't after the fact, and somewhere we missed. We accepted a quote from Snickers contracting for $7,621 for the sidewalk that was done out here, as well as a piece back by West End. Tom got quotes, I don't remember who else submitted, there were a couple. But we need to formally approve it, even though we've done it, and I don't think the bill's been paid yet, but... So I need to add that as fifteen.
Okay.
Other than that, everything is good.
Alright, I've got a motion by Michelle and a second by Terry, is there any further discussion on the agenda? Oh, you know what, it wasn't a typo anyways, I was just reading it wrong. Um, so that was on me. Okay, here and now, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietz?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Uh, moving on now to approve the consent agenda as printed, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
With the addition of number fifteen, uh, do you just wanna restate the dollar amount, Kevin?
It's $7,621.
Okay. Got a motion by Michelle, do I have a second?
I'll second at the rocks.
Yeah, I got a second by Roxanne Dietz. Any further clarification needed?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Michelle and Roxanne.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't have anything else, other than, if you will, if you were looking at the past minutes, you'll notice a bunch in there underlined with, if you recall when we made our learning plan, we varied from what was printed. So if you look back, I could open it here. Uh, I'm just gonna open this, I think it's in this one. Give me just one second. I gotta go back, sorry, that's not the right one. Let me just show you what this. It's in the sample resolution. And I just wanted to point it out, I had to go back, you know, once we altered from, you know, we had recommended, you know, a startup like this week, and we went to the short startup. So there's a whole bunch underlined in there. And so I just wanted to be clear, we put in, you know, is after the fact, but that's the motion and second. So if anyone, I think it's correct, I read through, and I just wanted to point that out, but otherwise, I don't think I have any other comments.
Kevin, I don't know what you're talking, I'm not sure what you're, what you mean, what I'm looking at.
You know what, it's in, it's in the resolution, I'm sorry, it's in the, um, the, uh,
Later.
Opening resolution, we had to go back in then, because when we approved that last month, you know, our recommendation was to do the five days a week at the elementary right off the get-go. And then also was, well, we had to update that resolution then after the fact, on what the board approved, because we altered from that, we did that slow start, and then we went this week to the... So we're just pointing out that that's what was approved, but that was not the language in that resolution. So we left it underlined, if you went through and were reading through your minutes, and that was part of the minutes from last month, that resolution. So I just, like you say, it's, it's good, I believe it's what was approved unless someone finds a typo or something that they felt was slight, slightly different.
Okay, so that wasn't a minute, I just didn't see it specifically, so I just wanted to make sure I was, I got it now, thanks.
Alright, thanks. Anybody else need clarification or anything else? Alright, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietz?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Got a motion by, um,
Rocks.
Roxanne, and a second by Tony. I'm not blanking on your name, I'm trying to bring up the resolution here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
My link from my, of the agenda in a PDF, it's just not linked into it.
Let me just get up, can you see that okay?
Yep. Alright, resolutions for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's education programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public School ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the district, or received for the school district. Uh, from the PCA Mill of International Falls for football helmets and shields, $1,500. For student school supplies by PCA Mill, $3,500. From Coca-Cola for Falls High School, $39.05. In memory of Randy Marks to PALS Special Olympics, $25. Um, I had a motion by Roxanne and a second by Tony, is there any further discussion?
Can we just make sure that we fix her name, Randy Mark, there's no S at the end?
Duly noted, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, um, we will have a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietz?
Affirmative.
Carries unanimously. Uh, moving on to action item number two, approve the proposed 20 pay, 21 levy fiscal year 22 at maximum. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry for the discussion.
And just so that everyone's on board, we do this every year, um, for the most part, right now, we levy the maximum. If we want to change that amount, you have up through December to do that. Um, but typically, we have not changed it, but just so everyone's aware, that's why there isn't an amount in there. We will, um, come back with the exact amount.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, we got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry, we'll do a roll call vote, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietz?
Yep.
Carries unanimously. Um, moving on to item number three, set superintendent goals for school year 2020 to 2021. Um, we kinda left that without, um, the, without an item, I guess attached to it on purpose.
We did, and I had a couple people, Ted and I had had a discussion, you know, technically, we just need to come, I guess I'm gonna say to a consensus, unless we can't get there, then Ted said he would bring it to the board as a formal action next month. Um, so originally, we left it blank, and, I mean, I have some ideas, and two board members reached out and said, I'd rather see something, so... Whether you like what I've put forth here or not, that's where the discussion starts. I, I've put on your screen, um, four ideas, if you will, but it's up to us to decide, you know, A, what you want my goals to be, and secondly, I'm gonna say what our goals need to be. Because technically, you know, the board, um, I'm to, in essence, follow through, you know, with direction from the board, and so if you, and I actually attended, again, virtually, um, an update on strategic planning and goal setting, superintendent goals last week from MSBA, and that's what they talk about, you know, um, it should be the will of the board and the direction you want me, you know, pushing, if that's the right word, and directing, so... Number one is our academic goal, and it's the same thing that was in place last year. Because of our shutdown, the state has allowed the QCOMP goals to be carried over, if you will. And so in essence, it's baseline data, again, those are our goals, um, the district goals, so I put that in as an academic goal. Um, the second one is coming back to, and I don't know where we go exactly right now with, um, you know, our strategic plan, that's kinda where we were pushing, if you recall, and trying to get somewhere, and then COVID came in, and it was, we canceled our two in-person listening sessions, and like you say, either we look at redoing and collecting data in a different way, or, I mean, we let it sit until we can get, but we, we should come to, you know, a decision somewhat on there, or take that off as a goal. Um, number three is something I, I chose, and I'm pushing out there to try and do some, I guess I'd say better communication, and not necessarily like a weekly article, um, but making sure we have, you know, some district posts, if you will, on a weekly basis. They could come from me, and some of the stuff has been, some stuff comes from other people, but it's an idea. And then, number four is just, I, I put all things COVID. I mean, there's a ton of extra stuff on the plate, and it's not really a goal, because it has to be done, but on the other hand, that's where a good chunk of our time and extra time, if there is such a thing, is being put right now, and has been for probably six months. Um, so, starting discussion, I guess, of what you would like to see, or things you would like added, or taken off, or whatever.
Uh, Kevin, is number four, a GEAR, ESAR, and CARES, is that a grant?
Those are all the funding sources, and actually, the CARES money, um, there's actually two pieces to that. We got an allocation that we have to apply for, and we're in that process, as well as we're getting, um, another CARES, we applied for some county CARES money. Um, it's the Federal Government CARES Act, and so there's actually two pieces to that, and, um, been working with Jenny Herman, and the county wanted some more student numbers last week, and that has to, the CARES Act had to be approved, at least our fiscal piece put in by October 1st. And so the county was meeting on the 23rd again, and then the board as a whole on the 29th, and so I reached back out to Jenny and just said, "We can't wait till the 29th. We have to at least know what is gonna be accepted on our behalf with the board, because then it's a shell game." You know, if they're not gonna accept certain things on our behalf, we have to change, you know, our application. So she's in the, um, it sounds like we'll hear on the 23rd, like I say, what the exact amount we're gonna get, and we can get that one at least firmed up, and then, um, the GEAR money, for the most part, has been, that's a small amount. And then ESAR actually has, um, up through 2022 to spend, but the piece with the county and our CARES money has to be spent by December 31st. Actually, the county by, I think, the 1st of December. Um, and so it's, like I say, it's really a shell game of, you know, where can things go? Some of our new hires, we're using that ESAR money, because that has, uh, we can pay on the backend for. So those are all funding sources, let alone what else is gonna come. You know, I, I sure hope there's more to come, but who knows?
But they're grants, they're not loans.
They're not loans, they're, for the most part, federal money, I hate to say it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, these are, these are kinda on track with where we're at right now. I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about their strategic plan. We kinda started that off strong, like Kevin said, and then COVID, uh, came. But, I mean, at some point, we have to start getting back to normal too now. It'd be nice to, um, have a process going or something by the time the new board comes in. That way, the people who've been here for a while and done it a few different times can help out with the start of that process. I'm sure the new board members can be invited in to be, you know, add input, you know, as appropriate, but... I, I'd like to see us getting going on that again too. I mean, that, we have it as his, as Kevin's goal, but only because it's gonna take up so much of his time. That's really gotta be something we're all gonna do. If there's interest in starting that back up.
Well, I think it's great, and I think it's necessary to do it before the end of the year, because we, part of the strategic plan was to get input from those members who were leaving as well. So I think that is, is an important part. I, I'm really pleased that Jen Windows is, um, being such a go-getter on, on kinda leading us on this. Um, so, you know, I'm more than willing to do whatever I can. I, I again, have to be not in person, but I will do everything I can.
Okay. Um, does anybody have a goal that, an alternative goal that they would like to propose? I got an email from Jen earlier, kinda attracts with, it's pretty close to this proposal right here.
I think this is probably a good place to start, and if we need to modify goals mid-year or change them around a little bit, I think you have opportunity to do that, but I think this is a good place to start.
Okay. Alright, well, I mean, if we don't hear anything else, we, I mean, we can formally adopt these with different, or with wording, I guess, maybe, something more than just strategic plan update, other than that's, I mean, that's pretty much what it says.
It's figuring out what we wanna do, though. I mean, if, if we wanna keep moving, and I guess where I'm getting at is, the, we, we were at the point of getting input from the community, that was the idea of the listening sessions, and we never got that far, so...
We could probably start that back up now on a safe way too, now that, you know, things are kind of a little bit more known.
If we did it, or maybe it's, maybe it takes six sessions, but smaller groups and, um, you know, more invites, or, um... Why don't, um, and I'm not volunteering the people that were working on that, why don't we have a discussion and see if we can come up with an idea of what, you know?
Yeah, I'm still game if, uh, if, um, Rox and Jen are still interested in being part of that little committee.
I'm, I'm happy to do that, but I think I, what I heard you say, Kevin, which I think might be the thing is, the strategic plan should really be coming from the board, right? Like, it may or may not need to be in your goals?
Yeah, but he's still gonna have to spend a lot of time on it, I think is the catch, right? So, where, kinda where we, um, have his goals is where he's gonna spend most of his time. And, uh, he's gonna have to be involved in it just as much as the board is, I would think, unless I'm wrong about that.
No, I, I think that's correct, I mean, I, I definitely should be as involved as, I'm gonna say, anyone in it. And we'll definitely do, I would love to have some help, and, you know, kinda like we were doing before, um, you know, working as a team, but, I, no, I think, you know, um, it definitely, it's just getting the wording on what we wanna do, what the next, you know, the next steps are, so to speak. Um, if we'll be satisfied with getting public input in a slightly different way, or, you know, compared to having two meetings, I think we're gonna have to do more than that, whether it's, you know, half a dozen smaller, you know, listening session group meetings, whether it's doing some Zoom meetings like this with a group of six, eight people, you know, something that you can manage a little differently, and collect that data, and then come back to the board with the next step.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think we could do, one of the last things that we suggested was doing like a short thing to get something going, at least for the next six months, and that would be easy to do this fall, um, based on what Rox is suggesting, you can get it done before the end of the year, that would be easy to do without a lot of time commitment, I believe. Um, and in regards to communication, um, I'm glad you included that as one of the goals, 'cause I think we really, I really think we need to work on communication, especially in a year like this, when there's so many reminders that need to go out, and families have so many questions about the, and staff, everybody has questions really right now. So, I would, I would like it to somehow be organized in a way that, what do, what do people need to know? Like, finding out what they need to know, and then making sure we're getting that information, including updating the website, which, um, I know it's, everybody's just really busy right now, but maybe making that part of that communication piece, so that people can just go there, I just go to the website and look first. Um, and that's where I go when I go to other school websites to find out what other schools are doing. I can, I can find that information kind of seemingly updated, I don't know for sure if it is new, but... Just something to think about in the communication one.
Okay.
Yeah, so all the, we have to do is add some, a little bit of terms to make it measurable for you, Kevin. If you could do that, then we could go ahead.
You mean like a timeline for it?
Well, no, any kind of measure, I mean, goals always have to be measurable, strategic plan update is measurable.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
I agree with you, Rox, but I think it's, I think Kevin's done the work of making suggestions. I, I guess, again, I didn't get, I wanted to attend that strategic planning, uh, training, but I believe it might be our, I feel like we're, we're making you do all the work here, Kevin, and I think it's our job to make out some of those specifics, but what do you think?
Well, yeah, but unless you just did something real, real simple with the strategic plan updates, such as, um, follow through on, um, 100% of the steps of the strategic plan as outlined, something that's very, you know, not, not too detailed, because we don't have details for a while.
Yeah, I'm with you, and I can get something, you know, we'll, we'll come back and figure out what our, you know, I'm just gonna say if it's the next three steps, four steps, what, what we feel we need to do, and can update the board on that. Um, 'cause I agree, you know, if you, uh, invite people and we don't go any farther, it's hard to say you did or didn't complete that goal, so I, I'm on board, I'm on board.
Thanks, Rox, thanks, Jen. Um, so, more or less, these are gonna be the goals, we can have something to vote on, um, next month, based off of these, and, um, we can put some of what Rox just recommended for a few of the different things. That way they're measurable. Alright. So, I don't think we need any action on that, because they're not official, um, it was just on there so we could talk about it. So, one sec, let's see. I think we're, I think it's, um, report time, if, if you agree, Kevin. Alright, um, is Missy Tate on with us, elementary principal?
Yeah, I'm on, over here.
You have a, um, report for us, Missy?
Yeah, um, so our student number is at 452 for September. Um, we had, we got two of our students who had went to another school, they're back already, so that's good for some of our kids that had left. Um, for the most part, I think things have went really well over here this week. Um, we had a few kinks to work out in transportation and parent pickup the first days, but I think it's went really well now, and it's, um, moving pretty efficiently. Jeremy set up a new bus run for us, and, um, it seems to be working really well. Let's see, um, our open house got a lot of positive feedback, both from parents and from teachers. They really enjoyed having that one-on-one time with those families to really, um, just talk individually and get to know those students and kinda make some of those connections before the school year started. They haven't had that before, because, you know, those of you who have students in elementary school know how busy open house can be, and it's just like a lot of parents in there at once, so you don't have that opportunity to talk individually to those teachers, so that was very, um, positive and very successful. I would say the number one concern, aside from COVID, that we have right now is our subs situation. I mean, we don't have a lot of subs, um, both at the high school and the elementary, so that definitely creates problems when people are gone, and more people are gone now for things that they may have come to work for in the past, so the subs is, is going to be an issue this year.
Missy, may I say also that, um, I've heard from people on distance learning that it's going so much nicer this year rather than last spring, because last spring, when their students had questions, they would text, and now this year, if they would text in a question, teacher sets up a Zoom meeting and explains it to them, so, um, it seems to be going a lot better.
Oh, good. Yeah, and we actually, um, I would just go back to our open house, we actually had some students who were scheduled to be distance learners, um, prior to open house, and then when they came in at open house, I think they just felt very comfortable with the way things were set up and the way that the teacher explained how things were going to go, and we actually had several students that opted for in-person learning then, after open house, so that was nice too. I think we have close to about 50 distance learners, give or take a few.
Um, alright, does anybody have any other questions for Missy? Well, thank you very much for your report. Um, moving on to Tim Eversen, secondary principal, you hear Tim?
I'm here.
Oh, is he behind me?
Right behind you.
I don't know what I was, I didn't, alright, that's funny though.
Okay, our enrollment, we're at 553 right now, which puts us up, the last time I did this was in July. So we're up 15 from July, and we've had quite a few students who have come in, uh, to the district. We actually had a number of students come back from neighboring districts who had left in past years, so that was good to see. We are, currently, we have 88 full-distance learners in grades six through 12, and that equates to about 16% of our population. Um, we had a meet the teacher, which is a virtual event this year, and it sounded like it was well-attended, and one of the positives, uh, all our students are put into a homeroom with one of our high school teachers, and we were more purposeful this year, making sure that all the students in the homerooms, um, were one of their students. And every family got a call from a teacher this year explaining how things were gonna happen as far as opening up, and, um, talked to them about our virtual meet the teacher night, and also our computer pickup. So we were able to get materials out to kids before that meet the, the teacher. And I have to say that last week, with a quarter of the students each day, and that slow roll actually worked out really well. It gave us a chance to, to learn our protocol better with kids here, have smaller numbers, and to teach the kids. And then today, we had half our students in the building, and I thought things went really well. One of the things that, um, it's kind of a difficult time is lunch, when we have quite a few of the kids down, especially our A lunch, where we have the younger students, just trying to keep everybody spaced out in the line, and then once we got in eating, we had plenty of room for them to sit, and then we had to move them out into the gym so that we get the cafeteria cleaned up. So, things have been going well, we even went kinda back to like an elementary-type release at the end of the day with buses to try to keep the hallways cleared out, and that's been working well. Teachers have been working really hard right now to manage the classes, having students both in class in front of them, and then on their computers in the Zoom sessions, and I, I looked, and I would say that every teacher has between 20 and 30 distance learners right now, so they've got a lot of kids in a lot of different places on any given day, and they also have, if we're a Team One on Monday and Tuesday, they've got Team Two at home in addition to the, uh, to the full-distance learners. And the pairs and the secretaries, the cooks, the custodians, everyone has been extremely busy, and everyone has been pitching in and being flexible, and I, I just think we've really pulled together, and things are going well, and hopefully, things continue to go well. Uh, the state high school lead today voted to allow competition in both volleyball and football, and I think Kevin's gonna mention a little bit on that. It sounds like practices are gonna officially begin on Monday, and then our competitions will be following in, sometime in the first part of October, and that's gonna be pushing, like football will be pushed back into November. And that's gonna be pushing, like football will be pushed back into November. And I, I can't, I'm not gonna say the number of games they're gonna play. It is gonna be a shortened season, but it will be pushing things back a little bit. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Does anybody have anything for Tim? Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Um, moving on to Dan McGonigal, community education director. Dan, what do you got for us?
Uh, I'm gonna do a quick presentation on esports. Um, can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
And can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yep, good to go? Okay. So, uh, it's been something that I've talked to a few people, Ted and, and, um, the board of the KTI, um, of which I'm a member. And I'm just gonna try to kind of let you guys know quick what, what I've been working on in terms of trying to get this thing to come together for our students. Um, so esports encompasses all forms of organized competitive video gameplay. Uh, it requires at least two teams of five students. And it's, it's, uh, strategy games. So it's, it's kind of worth meeting the kids where they are right now in today's world and, uh, bringing the educational component to it. Um, high schools are creating esports programs to engage students, build school culture, promote career and college readiness. It's transforming what is often an isolating activity into a social experience, leading many of us, uh, or many of them to, uh, some of the same rewards as traditional athletics. I put these videos in, but I'm not sure. They didn't work on my computer the other day. So Kevin, if I need to share my, a link here, can you guys see? No. So I gotta share that, right? New share.
Dan, is this for high school only?
Uh, it'll be grades, um, seven through 12, but yeah, probably more primarily high school students. Can you guys see this video?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, we'll skip the ad. Not sure if I can get the sound on here now.
I'd have to turn your sound up.
Now I gotta unmute technology. Sorry. All right, well, okay, so this is kind of a news story describing the esports. So you can kind of see, so students will use their, oh, nobody's seeing it, sorry. Okay, so I'm gonna just narrate this without the sound. I wasn't gonna show a bunch of this video anyway. So this is a school in California. Students, you know, you see eight, 10, 12 students. Oftentimes they use an already existing computer lab, so there's no additional cost to a district. And the students basically would compete within a, within a grouping, which I'm gonna touch on in a little bit here. And, you know, so it's, it's, any of you who have kids in this demographic, especially the seven through 12 age group, this is kind of what they're doing right now, um, in their spare time. So, um, you have, you know, you'd, you'd have a coordinator or a person that's kind of coaching it, similar to trap shooting or, uh, robotics. And then, um, we would compete state and then it, it can even kind of turn into nationally. But the, the biggest exciting thing about it is there's quite a few colleges now that are, that have really moved to this space and are, are offering a lot of opportunities to students. So I'm just gonna pause that. That's, it, it was meant to kind of just give you guys a sense for what it looks like.
Is this for only in-school classes, not home distance learning?
So, uh, well, I think, I think we could probably pull the distance learning kids into it in some capacity, um, depending on their setup, um, and, and our comfort level of providing them with the, with the equipment needed, uh, in, in-house. But, um, so I, I certainly think in today's world that that could, could work, Rox.
Okay.
So often, I'm just gonna touch real quick, often schools leverage their existing IT investments. There's over 15,000 students right now. Um, 589 million will play some form this, this year, not in the educational aspect, but some form of video gaming like this. Uh, they're expecting quite a bit, bit of a big growth. And we'd be leading the way in terms of smaller districts. Um, I was the first one up here that started kind of talking about this and I've pulled in quite a few, uh, community people who are interested in hopping on with us. So, um, right now it's mostly in Rochester and the cities. There's not even much of it going on in Duluth. Uh, so you guys probably are wondering about the cost. Like I said, we can leverage our existing IT program or our IT investments already. What are the benefits? Uh, student engagement. Um, and then kind of next steps for me would be, I plan to offer a Q and A with, with students, uh, as, as soon as I get your guys' blessing. You know, even if it means multiple evenings to accommodate current, uh, COVID restrictions. I'm hoping we can find math or science instructors or a community member with the passion and drive to take this program and lead it and help it grow into a, a vibrant opportunity for our students. And then probably this year, I think we'd start slow, so, um, well, let me, let me skip that quick. I'm gonna jump to benefits here. Like I said before, college and career opportunities is one, one of the biggest benefits of this. Um, it's an opportunity for those students who don't necessarily wish to take part in a sport, to be a part of something bigger than themselves, which as a former coach in soccer, I think is a big key, uh, piece to this. Uh, obviously the opportunities for growth and learning, uh, the creation and practice of sauce skills, including communication, collaboration, critical thinking and creativity. Uh, it's, it's also many of the skills that employers are looking for now in recent graduates. So it can provide a gateway to colleges and, and universities, but as a gateway to careers as well. And in the bigger picture sense, the investment now could lead to retention of these students who come back with the knowledge and skills to secure good-paying jobs and careers while being able to live anywhere they choose. So big picture sense, I do think that this is a partially way to build community as well. So these are, these are six of the schools and I've had two more since I put this thing together, reach out and want to be a part of some sort of association up here with us. So the Walker community, that guy jumped on it right away. He's been probably the most, um, passionate about it in addition to myself. Wadena, Deer Creek, Nevis, Black Duck, Thief River Falls and PRB. So next steps, I'm just hoping for your guys' blessing to move forward with it, with the opportunity to engage students around this. If you guys have any suggestions for, uh, teachers or, or people who would, who you can kind of picture taking this over and helping us get this to grow. And then, uh, I need to talk with Tim and secure kind of the space computer lab. I know that's kind of an issue right now with, we've had to take some of those classrooms and make them classrooms. So that could be a hurdle that we'll have to probably overcome, but I've seen our staff work, uh, and Tim himself work diligently to provide opportunities for students. So I know it's not something that we can't overcome.
It almost sounds like, it almost sounds like it could be a compliment to the LSI theme that we're kind of doing too, when I listen to you, Dan.
Yeah. And, and anything that, anything that we've started on that way, I think, uh, we could, we could try to partner or pair or collaborate or piggyback off of, uh, any, any of that too, so.
So I guess, I, I've talked to Dan about this. I haven't done any work for him, so I'm not taking any credit. I've just talked to him about it and, uh, he, um, and I know that this is probably gonna be the most popular thing that we've done as a school. I, I can't, I mean, as far as sports go and everything like that, it's just the way that things are going. And I think it's ridiculous, by the way, that people just wanna sit around and play video games and watch each other. But it's become, I mean, and then I, I'll go home and do that same thing with chess, you know, for an hour. So I'm just a hypocrite because it's the exact same principle. And I know like my nephew, he's, he's addicted to not, I don't wanna say addicted in a bad way because he's not, he's collaborating. It's not the same just sitting and staring and playing a video game. There's a lot of strategy that goes into it and a lot of teamwork, just like any other sport. I guess the only difference is it's less physical, but we have plenty of things that are mental and not physical anyways, so.
And, and they've really brought that educational compete, component to it now. So it, it's, you know, I, that, the whole purpose of this is that educational and learning piece too. Ted and I have shared about that, but I just wanna reiterate that to the group that this isn't a bunch of kids sitting around playing Xbox with school equipment because they can't afford it at home. This is, this, this is organized in the same way that robotics, you know, those of you who understood and saw the robotics program grow from that organic place. It's very similar, it, it's just the latest trend in education now and it's very similar to robotics.
And kids are getting scholarships for this now, just as much as they are for other sports. It's, uh, it's kind of insane what they're giving out for this type of stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of money for our students.
How are we situated for, um, for computers, uh, Chromebooks or whatever for, do we have enough for all these kind of things too?
You'd have to use the high-end, um, well, not even that high-end, depends on the game, but the CAD computers are kind of probably the, actual desktops are probably the ones that people would use, I would imagine, more than.
Yep.
A Chromebook, it's kind of, you're not gonna, um, play too many games on that, especially.
But we have enough computer stuff?
Yep. Yep, we're, just in a normal time period, and I'm just being honest. I, I think it's worth exploring and letting Dan take the next step, see if there's interest from kids and see where it can go. You know, very similar to, like you say, the ones we've added here in the more recent past. But in normal times, yeah, it'd be something that one of our labs, the kids would use. They, they just need the computers with, I'm gonna say, more robust, um.
Just a better processor.
Yeah, better processor, you, you know, the Chromebooks, we, we have plenty of Chromebooks. If, you know, on that other hand, we're one-to-one right now and we're, we're good to go. But it's not something, I mean, it's, it's kind of like CAD. Those kids that are in CAD right now actually have those computers at home because they need that type of computer. That's the device we gave them. They need it at home because it won't run on a normal laptop or a normal Chromebook. So it's just a little different right now. We've kind of beg, borrowed, stole, if you wanna say. We've put double, uh, screens in some of the teachers' rooms because just of what we're doing. And so, um, depending on what the, uh, interest is as time goes on, we're gonna have to be flexible now. But in the normal time period, they would use the computer lab or the CAD lab or one of our labs, um, to do their gaming or practicing in on a, you know, however often they do it.
Great.
All right. Well, I think that means you're good to go, uh, to start exploring it then, Dan. Sounds good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, yeah, thanks. I, I imagine that when kids start finding out about this, they're gonna start getting pretty excited about it. All right. Well, funny. Let's see, what do we got left then? Um, recreation commission.
Oh, hang on, you skipped me here.
Did I?
Yeah, we, we put Dan in separate from kind of the committee reports.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Um, Kevin Grover, superintendent. I was gonna get you, though.
Gotcha. Okay, so, um, COVID update is, is Tim and Missy hit on as far as the, the school piece, I think, again, just like any normal year, I'm not gonna say there were no hiccups. There are some minor things we, um, I think have accommodated. We've, we've, we're adjusting and will continue to adjust as time goes on. You know, there, there are things that have popped and, and just so you're in the loop, one of the unions prior to us opening up came and had concern for their members. Um, and it had to do with the, um, I'm gonna call them neck gaiters. And there was a research article, I'm gonna say three weeks ago, that came out, maybe even a month ago, that they're worse than not wearing anything. And we kind of let it sit because that's part of the executive order, you know, bandanas, neck gaiters. You know, it lists specific things that are, I'm not gonna say equivalent, but acceptable. Eventually I, I, you know, we talked and I said I would be willing to survey staff, you know, and see. We have staff that wear them. And then there has been a fair amount of research after the fact. I'm not gonna say disputing, but just saying, you know, there's more to it than that. A lot of people have their neck gaiter doubled up, you, you know. And there's, there is, um, some arguments that maybe that person, how would I say it? It wasn't scientific enough. Anyway, long story short, we did put it out. Majority of people are in the ballgame of allow them. There were 63 the last time I looked here, um, which I think was Friday. 63, um, people said allow them, 15 said don't allow, and 16 said don't care. So the, the group is aware, I'm not gonna be asking the board to change it at this point. I, I think there's other people, if, if the governor and their department of health think they're not adequate, I guess I think they will step in, at least I'm hopeful, um, and say, you know, it's just like a, a one-layer mask, the same thing. How do you, you know, how do you monitor? How do you control? Because I talked about, if you had like more of a flea skater, be, be very good. It's just those real thin, the ones that were more protection of sun. So there are things like that that are, um, going on. Things coming up and we're trying to work through them. We are meeting, um, Tim, Missy and I and Leah with the county on Wednesday to hopefully get some practice ahead of time on contact tracing. Had reached out last Friday and, and they've, uh, agreed to come forth and, and work with us because we have plenty of questions and we're just gonna do some kind of tabletop exercises, if you will, and, and see where it goes from there. Excuse me.
Kevin?
Yep.
Kevin, now, uh, you went so quickly, I wanted to jump in and back up a little bit. The, um, two things, you know, on the gaiters, I mean, I have heard that, or I've read online that if you take a, a piece of a shop towel, you could take a square of shop towel and cut it in fourths and put it just in the area of the nose and mouth under those gaiters and that would add another layer of protection. That's one thing. The second thing is, I wonder if it would be a good idea if you contacted the governor and told him that there's these questions from the union, just so he's aware. And maybe that would spur him to consider making more of a clarification or doing some sort of assessment. I mean, I don't think any of our surveys, when I saw this survey, I thought, well, really that doesn't, we're not scientists, we don't know any of those things. They should have people from the health departments making those decisions.
And I guess where I'm coming from, and, and I'm sure half of you probably saw the article when it came out or, I mean, it was all over everywhere. And now if you go do some, just Google neck gaiters now and read some of this, there's been a lot of, I'm gonna say, second guessing. Even the author came out and went, you know, this really wasn't the direction I expected this to go, you know. And so I, I guess my point is, you know, they were, just like many of us, at uneasy when that first came out. Now it's kind of like, you know, if we're doing social distancing, you know, like I said, some people are rolling them. Some people, you, you know, um, one teacher at least has talked to the kid, students about it, just saying, you know, hey, um, double, triple layer is what they're, you know, recommending. You know, use your best judgment and, and I don't know where else to go, but they're, we're just working through issues and trying, and again, it gave them a voice that, um, and, um, again, not saying it's right or wrong. I can't tell you, you know, maybe we'll find out two months from now we should have. You know what I'm saying? But, um, we gotta be careful, you know, what, I don't wanna say challenges we, um, accept and trying to, you know, because we could go stricter. You know, as a board, you could, you, you know, um, no, everyone has to wear the, the face, um, mask that we're providing. You know, I, I'm not recommending that, but it just, um, it's where we're at and, and like I say, I can pass it on their direction, but I, I would guarantee you the department of health and that group has seen that article and is well-aware, um, because it was national news, it was in many different places.
Well, I guess I do, you know, I am well-aware of the fact that even though sometimes things are said in articles and things are all over the place, sometimes you just ask a question and you can get some better clarification. I mean, if you say in two months, you say, oh, we should have done it differently, what would it hurt to just pass it on to the governor and see what he says, you know, see if he does anything? I just would encourage you to do that.
Consider it done. I'll shoot an email.
Thank you.
The other thing, just so you're aware, I mean, you know, things are flowing, um, you know, are, um, the, I'm holding up in front of the camera, the, uh, decision tree i- is what we're, um, day-to-day using as far as recommendations for staff, students, families. That is what we need to live by to keep ourselves safe. Thursday night I had two calls in the evening and we worked, I'm guessing about an hour on, um, the two different situations and making sure one was with staff and one was with a family to make sure things are done correctly. And I guess I will give both, um, parties credit because, again, working to make sure we're doing what is right. And I'm not gonna say Leah or, um, others have not taken a little bit of heat, but it is what it is. And we're gonna stand by that. When kids or staff should not be here, we need to live by that. And, and so I only foresee it, um, you know, being more as we go on. Um, I did get some information before I came in and I, like I say, I don't know how much it'll affect our. I did get some information before I came in and I, like I say, I don't know how much it'll affect our numbers or not. If you've been watching the county numbers, they have been going up the last week. I did get information and we'll see how many. But supposedly there's some college students that have tested positive. But I'm not talking at Rainy River, they're kids that, you know, could be our own kids, they are our own kids, so to speak, that maybe are going to UND, MSU, wherever. They test positive, that data's coming back to the county. So a person from the county let me know and they're working on seeing what they can do or how they can get, you know, kind of like they did zip code data here a little while ago to try and better, you know, inform communities, take St. Louis County, you know, the Duluth is much different than many of the other schools, for instance, in St. Louis County. So they're, and I'm not saying it came from that area, but that's why they, they did zip code data. Just like, we are much different than North home, I'm guessing. You know, so if they can take it to another level and somehow disaggregate, disaggregate the data a little more, it may, you know, give us a little different picture. But so things are ever-changing, if you will. Tim had mentioned High School League. Yes, if you recall, I'm going to say about the beginning of August, the Board of Directors from the High School League made some decision on fall sports. And I guess I'll give them credit, they made a decision and things went forward across country, at least for us, cross-country and girls' swimming were able to go this fall. And then football and volleyball were, I'm going to say, put at a different time. I'm not saying it's good, bad and different, but that's the direction we went. They have since been sued, they have a couple lawsuits going on whether they had the right to do that or not. And I guess I, I'm not going to get into, I haven't spent time even researching that. But they did have another emergency meeting today. About a half hour before I came up, Bill got me an update. And yes, it is true, they have made the decision to allow football and volleyball to go this fall now. A little, football, I think, is a six-game season, starting October. The season would start next Monday, September twenty-eighth, with play resuming on October ninth. Volleyball starts next Monday with games allowed on starting October eighth. I think it's a, I don't remember how many game, that was seventeen or fourteen, I don't remember. They are going to, it sounds like, allow some spectators, at least with football. And again, I don't want to go into much detail because I haven't seen enough and I don't want to misspeak. But we're going to have to, well, unless the board wants to go in a different direction. Roll, I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent in favor. I definitely don't like seeing kids miss out on opportunities. But on the flip side, I, I am very concerned with the direction that it could take our, our case numbers, if you will. And yeah, all the states around us are participating in football and some of these sports. I don't know what else to say. More to come, I guess, as, as time goes on. Does anyone have comments or questions on that? I mean, I have a few more things, but it's, it's just, it's fresh out of the news wheel, if you will. And I don't have a whole lot of data to really speak on. Like I say, they, I, I did inform a few people, we got a survey actually on Wednesday morning, I think. And they wanted it, administrative teams to give our opinion and it had to be in by noon on Thursday. And again, it sounds like according to some updates Bill gave me today, eighty percent of respondents were in favor of the sport starting. And that's coming from schools. I can't say if that's true numbers or not. But that's where we're at right now.
Kevin, you have a board member in me saying, be conservative. I will always vote for be, doing less at this time and holding off until later when COVID goes away. So you'll know that that's what I'm always going to support is holding off as long as we can.
But I mean, unless the board-
Sorry, I just have to say, parent of a volleyball player, I'm really struggling because I do have my kids home and distance learning. And for them to even do the two-week practices, I wouldn't let my daughter go. And now I'm having to have her choose between either playing volleyball or just staying home. So it's hard, it's hard where we're at right now.
I have a son that's going to be playing football. And I'm all for, I guess, them playing. I wish they had started from the beginning because they're going to be playing, I suppose we could issue them snowshoes and insulate long underwear, but if they're mostly, it's going to be played in the snow. I, I wish they'd make decisions and stick to them. This is just going back and forth, this, I know this is unprecedented, but playing six games and it's going to be, in my opinion, it's going to be, it's going to be, I can't use the word, but it's going to be some kind of a show. Put it that way. I just, they need to make their minds up and stick to it.
I agree.
I'm done.
Kevin? I mean, unless the board has a different will, we're going to go and roll with whatever the High School League throws out for, I'm going to say criteria, you know what I'm saying, obviously?
We have to.
Well, we have to or we have to do something radical and.
Well, there would be no football for them otherwise because now the spring, unless they want to play themselves every week. They have no choice but to start.
So I, I'm just, that's the update. I think we will hear more pro or con in the days to come. And like I say, it, there are schools, and again, I'm not going to throw anyone under the bus. We, Mr. Eversen did actually reach out to a school in North Dakota that their recommendation was not, because a good chunk of the number of cases that they had were from their athletes. But again, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, you know. If that's what the High School League says and all the schools around you are doing it, is the board going to step in? Another thing I was reading, and again, not saying it's research at all. It was just over the weekend, I think it was in the Star and Tribune, you know, talking about, you know, even over the summer, these activities that did get going. And there were cases, whether it was baseball, soccer, a lot of it was even with the coaches, you know, and, and people, you know, not just the kids. And I don't know where they are unless, you know, I don't know if we possibly have any coaches that say, I'm not going to, or if they will, you know, continue. But it is going to put some families in some tough places. You know, they are, you know, like Tony said, they're distance learning and now are you going to let them come in? Or they, do they not get to play, you know? I don't know what to say because they're spending more time with a close-knit group of, you know, kids riding on a bus, for instance, traveling, than they would have anywhere in school, you know. And it's just concerning. And the flip side is, you know, take a football team. Are we, we're probably going to have to send two buses plus a van or two if we're going to, you know, run everyone. And even though there's less games, I think, whether we can accommodate, you know, it's going to be a little more of a challenge than normal. And it's just, it's just a little concerning. And we haven't been going out, doing what we're doing, long enough to know if this is even going to work, to be honest with you. Virginia right now.
Well, I hope they don't, I don't, I hope they don't have games every week and a deer hunting either because that's going to take away anybody that.
The first two Fridays.
Deer hunting is going to be on.
The first two Fridays of deer hunting, we have games scheduled, one home, one away. I don't remember which one is which. It's where it is, you know, and then possibly a playoff after that, so.
Okay, so if, if somebody wants to get together and rally up some board members and propose something besides the Minnesota State High School League, let Kevin or I know and proceed appropriately.
The only, the only other two things I had, and I'm just offering it up, and I talked to Ted, but I didn't put anything on here. If anyone would like to do a tour of the buildings, we did this a year ago, kind of at the end of summer. I'd be more than willing to take a couple people at a time, you know, and kind of show you the elementary, so to speak. Don't want to touch a lot of stuff and dirt, but we could do a walkthrough and kind of see the new project. The same over here, we can, you know, show you some of the stuff, do a loop. And so I'm just throwing it out there, if anyone has an interest, let me know. And I'll either kind of individually, or we can get a couple people and, and do a loop, you know, sometime. Can always look later in the year, but I'm just throwing it up. If you want to see any of this stuff, more than happy. And the only other thing, just giving you a heads up, at the high school, we are going to delay the drop ad deadline of a week because kids were only here technically one day last week, you know. And so to really get a feel if things are working or not, we're going to push it back another week. So we're just rolling with that so that kids have a little more opportunity to make sure the art class that they got into is really what they want or whatever. It's not, I don't think a big deal unless Tim has comments, but I just wanted you aware, we made that decision and are running with it. Because normally after the first week, no more ads or drops. We're going to give them a little more time to make sure they're in what they want to be in.
That's a good decision.
Go ahead.
That's a good decision.
Hi, can I make a comment before you're done, Kim?
Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Room. I just, with the sports, it sounds as though what you're saying is schools are expected to move forward with it unless they have a special board decision to not move forward with it. And if we, we've done so much work and teachers and all of your staff at every level have done so much work at keeping things as safe as possible to make this a successful start to the school year. I'm getting a message from you that, you know, there's, there's some concern that this increases the risk and it does. But I hope before, I mean, just because there's a schedule in place and we have to figure out what's, you know, how things are going to happen and, and practices were going to happen have already started, right? They're, they've already been able to practice, they had a three-week fall practice time, didn't they, already, starting?
That is going, that's a voluntary, you know, if a kid, just say a kid went out for cross-country, you know, they probably wouldn't have been participating or they don't have to. It's not anything they can require, but they allowed them to do that because of, kind of to keep interest. And kids that aren't in the fall activity, give them a little bit, oh, how would you say?
Right, training.
Yep, yep.
So, so I know that they were already working on meeting and practicing anyways. And I hope they, I just, I just hope that you can have Bill or all the coaches really be aware. I mean, I know they're aware, but I mean, you know, can Bill visit, visit the practices once in a while or other, you know, administrators and say, okay, how are they going, you know? And making sure that they're being as, as safe as possible because that adds to the risk that the whole school bears, really. And if we really want to do it, can we put a little, can we put that extra effort into, you know, kind of do some checks every once in a while, make sure things are going fine? Really watching, you know, making sure that we're continuing to do all the screens and all those things. I'm a little, I mean, if, if everybody's doing their part and they're, and we really want to make football and volleyball happen, just making sure that they're following through at practices, even when it seems inconvenient. Even though the kids go to the parking lot and they hang out all around their same car, but when they're in practice that they're really being careful. And I'm a little worried for football players that without a lot of training, that they might be a little bit more risk for injuries. So I hope we're, we're being careful and conservative in that because football can be dangerous and when you're not well-trained for it. So anyways, I hope we can just do more checks to make sure, and reminders, people just need reminders now to, to protect the rest of the school, making sure kids are being diligent, whether they're going in and out of the school, whether, where they're changing, if that's happening, all those things.
Well, I can tell you, they, I had to put it on for my son, his football helmet. They got these shields that cover their whole face, which was pretty impressive. I mean, it's, they're better than wearing a mask, you know, when they got the helmet on.
All right. Kevin, do you have anything else for us?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Is there, I mean, Dan already spoke, is there a community advisory board that wants to speak? If not, we'll go to Rec Commission with Terry or Mike. Do you guys have an update?
Well, we voted to cancel all fall sports, was unanimous by everybody. So that ended the fall sports and we're watching to see how the COVID goes and be dealing with it down the road. So that's where we're at. She's, not much going on.
Well, and my guess, and I'm not, I don't want to burst anyone's bubble, but I'm guessing it's coming back your direction because Bill's already been getting, you know, calls. Now that the High School League is doing football, what about Rec? You know, and I don't know, so probably going to be at least brought up, whether it changes or doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So we'll be talking about it.
All right. And then the person that I feel the worst for, Ella Bar Jeffrey, student representative, because she has to sit through all of this for her report. Ella, are you still with us?
I am. Can you hear me all right?
All right, we can. What do you have for us today?
Yeah, so Student Council was finally able to meet. We just had our first meeting two weeks ago and we're doing a welcome back bonfire this weekend at Voyager's National Park while following all safety guidelines. We have a new board, so I am the new president. Emma Erickson is our vice president, Anna Windows is our secretary, and Mitchell Erickson is our treasurer. And we're doing an election for historian this Thursday. And because this would usually be the time we do our homecoming planning, but so we don't do that. So we're trying to figure out some new things to do with that. And one thing we're doing is we're going to build a little free library that we can, when it's eventually safe to, we can put it outside of the school, so it's going to look like a mini high school. So I'm excited for that. And then we're going to focus on doing some community cleanup. So like cleaning up some of the highways and the parks in town. And then we are going to be doing, instead of in-person dress-up days, we're going to try to do some virtual spirit weeks, so dress-up days, activities. Because people are more active on social media, so we're hoping we can get some more participation with that too. And then we can get the community involved a little bit more. And then the last thing we're doing is we're setting, excuse me, we're setting up a new tutoring system. So we have about seven different Student Council members that have already signed up to be tutors. And so anybody in the school, grades six through twelve, that needs a tutor, just fills out a really simple form. And then we can match them with a tutor that they can meet with safely. Because that was one of our biggest requests last year is that they needed a tutoring system. So that's what we are working on right now.
That's awesome stuff.
Ella, may I ask how, I remember you talking about the concern about hallways and things with COVID when we opened. Do you have any feelings or comments on how that's been going from your perspective?
Yeah, so I haven't been in the high school a ton recently. I've just been trying to do the least amount of exposure I can. But what I've seen is it's going pretty well so far. I would just say we need to be a little more careful with our welcoming people into the schools. I know I've seen a few people not even do the check-in, they just like walk right by. And then I know a few people who have still been going to school with a cold or flu. And I know that's not COVID, but it's still not something we want to weaken people's immune systems with. So maybe if we just enforce that a little bit, if kids aren't feeling good, they should just stay home for at least a few days. But otherwise, I think it's going pretty well.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Ted? I just wanted to address that, what we're doing with temperatures in the morning is when students come into the building, we're asking them if they'd like a mark on their hand with a permanent magic marker. So they take their temperature in the morning when they come to their first class and the older students who leave for open study hall or open lunch. When they come back in, if they have the red color on their hand, they hold it up when they come out. We don't screen them the second time. So that maybe is what Ella saw, some of those older students coming back in. Because I have a, we have a pair that's positioned at that front door and everybody that comes through gets screened unless they've been screened.
Yeah, yes, that, that might be what I've been seeing.
Yeah, if you look at people's hands, they're going to have different colored X's on them. And we're just asking them if they'd like that, it just saves them time when they come back in. And I, I've been working the front desk all last week and this morning. And we are, we actually have a sheet that we use, a screening sheet. And when people call in, we're screening and, and parents have actually been pretty good, I think, about sharing symptoms that kids have and keeping kids home. And then the nurse has been following up with some of them if they, if they're in a situation where they have more than one symptom. And we've got the tree that we go through to figure out what the, you know, what their stay is. I know I had a family today that they're going to be out until they either have a test, come back negative, or ten days. they either have a test, come back negative, or 10 days. So we're trying to do the best we can with, with families. And I think families are, are being pretty good about it. Now older kids, maybe mom and dad aren't checking them before they leave.
Yeah. I'd say the only other thing with, um, school is I know at the college, um, we're required to like, before we like sit in a seat, use a computer or anything, um, we have to wipe it down. And then when we leave, we have to wipe it down. And I know we don't have, um, teachers in the same way that they do at the high school, but maybe if we can just encourage kids a little bit more to maybe wipe down their desks or use hand sanitizer a little bit more, but that's not also something we can control as much. But yeah.
Yeah. And actually teachers are wiping down all the desks. As soon as the kids leave, they're spraying everything down and wiping it. So when the kids come in, they have a safe desk. And we do have the hand sanitizer at the door and we're encouraging kids when they walk in to use hand sanitizer and then when they leave to use hand sanitizer. So we're, I mean, we've, we have a pretty good protocol in place and, you know, the teachers at first were having a hard time getting around all the desks because they walk through, spray everything down, then they come back through with paper towels. But I think that we're getting more timely and it seems that they're being, being able to get their room cleaned up in the five minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, I thought, yeah, it sounds like it's going pretty well so far.
And, um, and, uh, we just always have to remember all the talk that we're talking about symptoms. We also know that there's probably about, I can't remember, I think it's 50% of the people are asymptomatic that spread. So, um, we can't rest back and say, okay, perfect if we're watching symptoms. Just, I know you guys have heard it, but I'm saying it again.
Also, can I just add a really quick piece to that? I just, I have a little bit of worry with only the one check-in and the dot on the hand, just because if, let's say one person were to take a Tylenol or something, some kind of medicine that would alleviate a temp for a little while, and then a few hours later it could be coming back, we might be missing those things. Yeah, I agree with that too.
All right. Well, I think, um, that's it for the day. If anybody has anything else for the greater good, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
I'll second.
Motion by Roxanne and a second by Terry Murray at 6:13 PM. Um, roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Scopes Deach?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Go assemble elsewhere.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Goodbye, everybody.
See you later.